Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting. Item number one is called Order. Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at www tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. If you're here to speak on items designated as public hearing items later on in the agenda, please know that you will have an opportunity to speak when I introduce those items at the time of their public hearing. The city council will need to complete the other items of business leading up to those items, so we appreciate your patience. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item and you haven't filled out a speaker card yet, please make sure to fill out and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. I'd now like to invite everyone who's willing to stand and able to join me in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you very much. Tonight's agenda has a number of items that the city council must consider in order to conduct city business. Guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are also on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. We're now going to play a video with the proper protocol for ensuring the appropriate conduct at city council meetings.
The city of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting.
Thank you very much. We will now play a video conveying the city of Tempe's native land acknowledgement statement.
We wish to acknowledge that Tempe is the homeland of the native people who have inhabited this landscape since time immemorial. These ancestral lands of the Oatham, known as Pima, Peepash, known as the Maricopa, and their ancestors extend far beyond our city. This land continues to be spiritually connected to the Oatham of the Salt River Pima, Maricopa Indian Community, and Hila River Indian Community. We accept the responsibility of stewarding those places and solemnly pledge to consider this commitment in every action.
Thank you very much. Next up, item number four, meeting minutes. Tonight I'll be assisted by Councilmember Garland. Councilmember Garland?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for A1 to 4A2.
It's been moved by Councilmember Garland, and seconded by Councilmember Chin. Sorry, Councilmember Keating, too late. Please vote.
Yes.
And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Devaro absent. Next up, item 4B, acceptance of board commission and committee meeting minutes. Councilmember Garland?
I'd like to make a motion to accept board commission and committee meeting minutes for B1 to 4B8.
It's been moved by Councilmember Garland. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote.
Yes.
And that item also passes six to zero with Councilmember Devaro absent. Next up, I've got a couple of announcements here under item number five. First of all, 5A1, for the Tempe Arts and Culture Commission, I'd like to congratulate Andrea Hanley on her appointment to the Tempe Arts and Culture Commission, Patrick McNamara and Genevieve Vega on their appointments to the Commission on Disability Concerns, Jackie Tobias on her appointment to the Family Justice Commission, and Ramaldo Gonzalez on his appointment to the Veterans Commission. Next up here, I've got a proclamation here as well for Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. And I think, is there anyone here from CARE7 who's here to accept this this evening? Yes, I'll come on down, Tim. All right, so this proclamation this evening reads, "Whereas teen dating violence is a serious public health problem that is common among adolescents and young adults ages 10 to 24, and is the most prevalent type of youth violence, in which approximately 10% of adolescents across the U.S. report being a victim of physical dating violence annually, and only 9% of teen victims report seeking help. And whereas high school students who witness, experience, or perpetuate physical violence in a dating relationship are more likely to use drugs and alcohol, are at greater risk of suicide, and are much more likely to carry patterns of abuse into future relationships. And whereas educating young people about red flags and root causes of violence, building skills for healthy relationships, and changing attitudes that support violence can help prevent teen dating violence. And whereas raising community awareness and providing training for the trusted adults in the lives of adolescents is equally important, so they may recognize the signs of dating violence and serve as allies for prevention. And whereas nearly half of teens who experience dating violence report that incidents of abuse took place at school. And whereas the city of Tempe CARE7 Victim Advocates and Youth Specialists are working in our community to educate and support teens and their families. Our Family Advocacy Center provides a welcoming and confidential space to connect families with resources, assist through the continuum of care, and start the healing process. And whereas the recognition of Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month will benefit young people, their families, schools, and communities regardless of socioeconomic status, gender, sexual orientation, or ethnicity. And whereas the city of Tempe urges all Arizonans to work toward ending teen dating violence, this can be done by empowering young people to develop healthier relationships, assisting victims in assessing the information and supportive services they need, creating better resources for young people in need, implementing effective intervention and prevention policies in schools, and engaging in discussions with family members and peers to promote awareness and prevention of the quiet epidemic of teen dating violence. Now therefore, I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare February 2024 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month in Tempe, Arizona."
Thank you, Mayor.
There you go, sir. And I'm going to let, so Tim Birch here and Paul Bentley are here as well. I'm going to have Tim say a couple of words, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. We've equipped you all with these lovely orange awareness badges. We also have a lot in the background, so, our back of the room. So as you exit tonight, if you want to consider yourself an ally, a trusted adult for a young person who may be going through violence and needs to know that they have a safe person to talk to, be that their school resource officer, be that a CARE7 advocate, or be that a school specialist inside of school, please identify yourself and participate with this month. We thank you very much for this awareness.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Mayor, can I borrow that to read at the Tempe Union High School District Governing Board?
Of course, Councilmember Hodge, absolutely.
Monday, Wednesday? I would love that.
Actually, well, if we leave this one to Tim and I'll have Mariana get you a copy so you can take it with you.
Thank you.
You got it. All right, next up, item 5B, City Managers Reports and Announcements. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one announcement, which is wonderful news for our entire city and community because I know how much we place emphasis and priority on our history in Tempe. Dr. Zach Lechner, Senior Planner, and I know he's in the audience, Historic Preservation Officer, applied to the American World War II Heritage Program to request that the city of Tempe be designated as an American World War II Heritage City, and I'm so happy to report that his hard work paid off. The National Park Service letter reads, "The American World War II Heritage Cities Program honors the contributions of local towns and cities, countries, counties, and commemorates the stories of men and women and children whose bravery and sacrifices have shaped the U.S. home front during World War II and still impact our country today. Only one American World War II Heritage City can be designated in each state or territory, and that is Tempe. Tempe played a critical role in the history, and we are pleased to recognize your jurisdiction as the American World War II Heritage City through this program. This is especially very exciting because Tempe is only one of 11 communities across the United States added this year. So thank you, Dr. Lechner and team, and if you can come up for a photo with the mayor and council, I know that would mean so much. Thank you."
Council will join me in the front here. Thank you, Madam City Manager. Next up, item number six, Public Appearances. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed elsewhere on this agenda for discussion and legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals to address the city council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the city council. No person shall speak more than once, and there is a limit of three minutes per speaker. Speakers present at the podium must state their name and city of residence and provide a speaker card. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, and from becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or while attending the meeting. Speakers will be taken first come, first served in the order in which the cards are received. Speakers' visual aids and appearances by phone or recordings are not allowed. Council members are prohibited by state law from taking action on, commenting, or discussing a matter raised by a member of the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific agenda item for council's consideration for discussion and legal action. At the conclusion of public appearances, the council may ask the city manager to review a matter or place a matter on a future agenda. This evening I have two public appearances. The first public appearance I have is Mario Martinez. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Mario Martinez. I live in Tempe. At the last council meeting, I mentioned my concerns about being jailed in Tempe for DUI, which was not proven in court. Shortly after that, at the direction of Mayor Corey Woods, I was told by a Tempe staff member that these concerns were beyond the purview of the council. Corey Woods is entirely accountable for this evasive response. In past council meetings, Corey frequently relates the tragic story about how he lost his mother to cancer. One time, he stated he would give anything for an extra five minutes to spend with her. Corey said that this was personal. Corey also mentioned how he likes to take care of his elderly father. I truly empathize with this. Some time ago, when my father was diagnosed with metastasized cancer, I went to the doctor and I told the doctor I had trouble sleeping. The doctor determined I had a medical need to take sleeping medication, which I took as prescribed, including how it relates to driving. I have the prescription right here. That was the basis of me being prosecuted for DUI. The charge was so worthless that the Tempe prosecutors turned tail rather than bringing it to court. Because he lives in a different state, the only way that I can visit my father is to take vacation time. I wasted at least two weeks of my vacation time dealing with this DUI legal case. While Corey laments not having five more minutes with his mother, I lost two weeks of spending time with my father, who is probably dying right now. Corey incessantly remind us about his publicity, about being the first African-American mayor of Tempe, and how he is such a great champion of marginalized communities. As noted in the Smithsonian Institution in Washington, D.C., my father is one of the first Mexican-Americans to receive a PhD in physics, and he worked to promote minorities in science. My father and I both came from the segregated minority community of South Flagstaff. Corey, as demonstrated by your official evasive actions so far, you have proved that you could care less about a Mexican-American family who had a member arrested for a crime they did not commit. No Tempe family deserves this. Corey, you are ultimately responsible for these actions, not your subordinates. Therefore, Corey, I am requesting that you cease your evasive mayoral conduct and directly meet this with me about this matter relatively soon. Yes? Okay.
Time's up.
Okay.
As a note, too, just wanted to make a note as well to, and I think this either falls under you, Clarence, or perhaps Judge Kane, that once again we mentioned before that neither myself nor members of the city council have any jurisdiction over the prosecutor's office, so who would? Clarence?
Mr. Mayor, council, if they want to have discussion, they would talk to the Chief Judge, Judge Kane, or the city prosecutor's office.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, Peter Kovacs. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Peter Kovacs, Tempe. Low-income housing. It's emphasized on my website, even though I'm kind of token opposition for the mayor's job, but I'm running for US Senate as an independent, but that's ancillary to this. But I think it's an important issue we have to consider because we know we have a homeless problem here. Some of it is due to people who are alcohol or drug abusers, but I think it's a critical issue and something that should be looked at. I'll probably leave it at that because obviously the city council understands the, probably the seriousness of high rent. And in this state, unlike New York City where they had rent control, that's one of the things that I think is very important right now because rents are way up. And I'm living in a not-too-great kind of revolving door rooming house in a middle-class neighborhood on Cottonwood. But again, housing is housing, and I think we should at least emphasize the fact that people should have good low-income housing, and I'll leave it at that. And keep up the good work, everybody.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, that's all the speaker cards I have this evening. Is there anyone else wishing to address the city council? If so, please get my attention. Okay, seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. And I will move on to the Consent Agenda, item number seven. All items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated as public hearing item at the beginning of the item title. Council members may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. The Consent Agenda this evening is listed as miscellaneous, items 7A1 through 7A6, awards of bids and contracts, items 7B1 through 7B7, and resolutions, item 7C1. Once again, any agenda item designated as public hearing item can be removed by a member of the public for a separate consideration. If anyone from the public would like to have a public hearing item removed, please get my attention now. All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, were there any comments received from the public wishing to address the city council on a consent agenda public hearing item?
Nothing for this section.
Okay, thank you so much. Council, any other items that you'd like to have removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved to approve the entire consent agenda by Councilmember Hodge and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Yes.
Okay, so let me do this, Councilmember Hodge? Okay, and Councilmember Keating?
Yes.
Okay, and that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Devaro absent.
Oh, okay. Yeah, my apologies. I'll bring up the correct.
Oh, okay, okay, sounds good. So I saw the screen lighting up and I was like, okay, we're good. I'll take those as a, ah, thank you. All right, let's go again. Councilmember Keating, one more time.
Yes.
And that item does pass again, six to zero with Councilmember Devaro absent. Good catch, council members, thank you so much. That means we will then move on to item number eight, Nonconsent Agenda. All items listed on the nonconsent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Council members who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the council members with a disclosure form at this time. The only item under this section is 8A1, which is to award job order construction contracts to Builders Guild Incorporated, Caliente Construction Incorporated, Chase Building Team, Core Construction Incorporated, and SDB Contracting Services to perform the general construction projects. Council, any comments of discussion? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hodge? Seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams? Oh, there we go. And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Devaro absent. The next section on the nonconsent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. The items under this section will be read and introduced tonight, but no votes will be taken. The second hearing and final votes are scheduled for February 15, 2024. The first item under the section is 8B1, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance, amending Tempe City Code, Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 21, Sections 2, 3, 7, 5, related to composition, and 2, 3, 7, 7, relating to powers and duties of the Sustainability and Resilience Commission, allowing for additional flexibility yet maintaining diversity across sector representation. This is also a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments of discussion? All right, hearing none, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for February 15, 2024. The last item under the section is 8B2, excuse me, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from CSS to MU4 in the TOD corridor, a planned area development overlay to establish development standards, and a development plan review for a 15-story mixed-use development consisting of 300 dwelling units and 3,063 square feet of commercial uses for 1020 Apache located at 1020 East Apache Boulevard. Excuse me, the applicant is Gamage &amp; Burnham, PLC, and I see Manjula Vaz. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for your record, Manjula Vaz, Law Firm of Gamage &amp; Burnham. I'm here tonight on behalf of LV Collective, the project 1020 Apache. I will just give a brief presentation tonight. We've had a lot of discussion with staff and with the DRC, so I'll just give you a brief presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Just want to give you a little sense from LV Collective as a developer and the type of projects they build, and you can kind of see high density, high quality. It's really important, and you'll see in this presentation, that what we're bringing to Apache is kind of the openness of the ground floor. While we're building student housing, the ground floor is a mixed-use project that they have kind of used their hospitality experience. So you're going to see it's something that looks like kind of the way the Moxie works, in that the entrance, the lobby, the coffee shop is all together, so it has that kind of hospitality feel that you see here. They have a project called Moon Tower in downtown Phoenix, along and around the Roosevelt District, if you'd like to see the types of projects they build. And again, just to see the types of quality, high-density look, especially the ground floor plane that you'll see on Apache as we go forward. The site itself is on Apache, as you know, it's Super 8 Motel, the north side of Apache Boulevard, across from the Moxie. Here's the picture. The project itself is rezoning from CSS TOD to MU4 TOD, very similar to the other projects in the area, and then the PAD and DPR for the site-specific development standards and the design. Our project is to go from CSS, which currently is, to go to MU4 PAD, so it'll match the rest of the projects along Apache. We meet the general plan mixed use and the general plan density designation, and then just to show you kind of general plan 2050, it's also consistent kind of with the general plan that's also on the ballot. So just want to talk to you a little bit about the project. The project is a 15-story mixed-use building. We have 289 purpose-built student housing. We have studios, one-bedrooms, 47 twos, 17 threes, 153 fours. When I talk to clients, you don't see me do that much student housing, but this is the location for student housing, certainly in this area that it's always been next to two student housing projects, and these are people I've known for a long time, you know, in terms of kind of the quality and type of project we want to build on Apache. We have, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the flex space, restaurant, retail. We have outdoor dining space on Apache, and then we have a lot of amenities, as you'd expect, plus the garage. We have EV parking, we have onsite parking spaces, we specifically talked to the staff about in terms of delivery for Uber and those other things that happen, and then we have 372 bike spaces. So this is a landscape plan, which you can see here is a lot of landscaping surrounding the area, plus some dog parks towards, on the east side, but what you're going to, I'm going to show you in the renderings, but if you go on Apache, we very purposely have both drought-tolerant planting, but also plantings that will live and provide shade in the summer, you know, and also all, because there's a lot of traffic, as you know, on Apache on the sidewalk, so, things that kind of can hold up to all the activity that you have on Apache. So I won't go through the whole floor plan unless you'd like me to. This is the pool, as you can see, the second level, kind of co-working space, but I just want to talk to you a little bit about these renderings. What we have done, because on the west side, we are next to a tall 14, 15-story building of the rise, so our west side is actually the same height as the west side, but we have actually tried to match our east side, which is seven stories. So you're kind of breaking up the front, and then we have kind of very open space, a nice deck, but it kind of, we worked with both the neighbors and kind of our neighbors, we talked to Matt Salinger and Phil Amorosi in terms of how this would look there and what a nice break it would be, so you don't have just tall buildings on either side as you work in. So you can kind of see how you kind of marry both the east and the west and kind of reflect, but use the buildings on either side to reflect this building. And then you can talk a little bit about the pedestrian area, I'm going to show you a little bit more in terms of the coffee, so you can see that the entrance is kind of a hospitality design, very open. We have spent a lot of time with Ryan and Diana in terms of high-quality materials, landscaping, try to make it inviting, but it looks like inviting from a coffee shop for anybody. And then you can see we have kind of a separate entrance for the coffee shop, much like a hotel, versus the second kind of leasing entrance. And then here's our parking, and then you can see a lot of brick, different high-quality materials that you can touch along street frontage. Again, some more renderings. And the last thing we wanted to show, we spent a lot of time, both planning department and the DRC, they wanted more articulation on the north side, so just wanted to show you that, and we've, you know, kind of, so what it would look like the north side. Eventually, all of that will be developed on college, so this may be hidden, but we appreciate their input, so just wanted to kind of show you those elevations. And then the last thing I wanted to talk to you about is Matt and Phil, and I've talked a lot about kind of what happens if this converts one day, you know, how do you, how would you convert this project from student housing to a regular multifamily, convert three-bedroom to the two-bedroom? So we're designing it, so one day these could be converted into regular multifamily, and this shows you how you can do that with, make the bigger bedrooms, make bathrooms, take a four-bedroom, make it a two-bedroom, use the balconies, so we've kind of worked through that and worked through the staff with our conversion plan. And then finally, sustainability is a big portion in the city, so I wanted to talk about in terms of what we're working on. We've certainly worked through the EV charging stations and the landscaping, Energy Star appliances that I've talked about, and we're working through solar and the Fitwill certification. So that's a brief but somewhat thorough presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I would describe those exact words, "brief, but yet very thorough." That was great.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Vaz, appreciate it. This is a public hearing item. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? Can you get my attention? All right, seeing none, I'll look to the council. Any comments from any of you? Yes, Councilmember Chin?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Vaz, there were some conditions for approval submitted to you.
Oh, from the DRC? Yes.
Right, and by staff?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I just wanted to confirm, on that list, I was specifically looking at items 33 through 38 on the conditions of approval. Mostly, they were nominal, and I don't think they were extreme. It was on changes in materials?
Yes, those, yes, those are the materials we worked through with the DRC.
Okay, so I wanted to make sure that your client was amenable to all of those?
Yes, we support the conditions. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Anyone else on council, any further comments or questions?
Great question.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaz, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I don't have anything either. Just want to reiterate, this is only the first public hearing. The second and final public hearing of this item is scheduled for February 15, 2024. There are no items under 8C this evening, so I would go ahead and skip that section, which brings me to item number nine, current events, council announcements, and future agenda items. Also, under this item, council members can request that an agenda item be added to a future council meeting during their allotted time, but in accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on the item, other than to clarify the request. First up this evening here, we have Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. I only have just a couple announcements. One, I want to wish everyone a happy Black History Month, as I wrote on social media. It's one of those things that we do to celebrate not only our progress, but to be reminded of the steps that we still have, the steps ahead of us, and that it takes all of us to contribute, to march forward towards equality. I also want to wish everyone a happy Groundhog's Day. I think Arizona is probably the only, or the Phoenix area anyway, is probably the, actually, let me start again, the Tempe metro area is probably the only region in the, in the country that roots for Phil to see his shadow, so he gets some more winter. So here's hoping he sees his shadow, and we get six more weeks of winter, of beautiful weather here in Tempe. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Keating. Next up, Vice Mayor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few announcements. The first one is it's Neighborhood Day at the State Capitol, so that will take place on February 7, from 8:30 to 10:30, and you have the opportunity to meet your council members, legislative representatives, you can have a tour of the state Capitol, kind of get the behind scenes, so if you would like to do that, you can call 350, or 480, 350-8234, and, or you can go to our website at tempe.gov/neighborhoods. And my second announcement this evening is arts in the parks are back. This weekend, on February 2, we're going to go to Corbel Park from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and Scudder Park will be on February 3, and that's going to be from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And finally, on Sunday, February 4, we're going to be at Meyer Park, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This is, I know that it's supposed to rain, so it's weather permitting that we have our arts in the park, so keep your fingers crossed for no rain. Also, Councilmember Chin and I have our next Sustainability and Economic Vitality Committee on Friday, February 9, at 1:00 p.m., and during that, during our meeting, we will be getting an update on the long-awaited Kyrene Roosevelt and Farmer Bike and Pedestrian Project, so we're excited about that, and that's all for my announcements, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you, Vice Mayor. Next up, Councilmember Chin.
None, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilmember Garland.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three announcements. One, I have to tell you how much I really appreciated the help from the dementia-friendly team when my father was going through dementia, and I was his caregiver, so here's something that's really exciting. Dementia Friendly is now offering a bilingual memory cafe, and it's a support group with, for caregivers who are, whose loved ones are experiencing memory loss or dementia. They're going to be gathering together in a comfortable space to socialize, listen to music, learn about resources, and just be together and help each other out, which is really wonderful. They're going to be meeting the fourth Tuesday of each month at the Escalante Multi-Generational Center in the Brio and Bravo classrooms. The doors open at 9:30, the class will be from 10:00 to 11:00. The next one that's going to happen is going to be on February 27. So the next announcement that I have is the Envision Center, which is on Dorsey and Apache. They just had a presentation of the Community Foods Showcase and Envision Open House, and there are over 350 people that were able to attend that, and it was just a huge success. Eighty people arrived in the first 10 minutes, which I think is amazing. They had lots of activities there, and it was really well-received. It's a great center. If you haven't been there, it's a great place to go and to visit. The backstage pass. My next backstage pass is going to be on Saturday, February 24, from 10:30 to noon. We're going to meet at the Kuanis Recreation Center, and this is going to be a behind-the-scenes tour and discussion with the Tempe Police Department. We are going to tour the mounted units and talk about canines, and visit with the canines, and explore our SWAT vehicles, so if you can attend, and again, it'll be Saturday, February 24, 10:30 to noon, and meet at the Kuanis Rec Center, and then we will walk over to the mounted unit corrals. That's it.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Councilmember Hodge?
Okay, first one is Breakfast of Burdetta. That's going to be, this, it's not this Saturday, but following Saturday, on the 17th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, it's at the Escalante Multi-Generation Center. It's on finances, human services, and social services. It's going to be a good one. Come out, come all. We have all services out there, from banking, how to do your taxes, you know, from human services, if you have any, if you need any help with healthcare, all will be at that meeting, so please come out. Well, Councilmember Keating took my joy, but I want to say, yeah, happy Black History Month, and I will say that Black History is all history, and enjoy this month and learn a lot. It's, it's a very big month for me and the mayor. Also, I want to congratulate Read On Tempe. They're doing a wonderful job, so congratulations. And if you haven't seen, if you haven't visited or been out there, please come out and do it, it's a phenomenal thing. I get a chance to read to our preschoolers, and it's just, I love it. And also, we do have our text preparation e-file starting January 29, so please visit our TCC website for more information on that. It's from January 29 to April 13, and it's for free. All right, and we had Tempe FanCon. It was some amazing costumes out there. It was a great time, so thanks to hundreds of who attended to that. Oh, last, but not least, my son Jevon Hodge, I have the privilege to say that he is now been appointed as District 8 new representative, so congratulations, Jevon Hodge. And as a proud mom, I can say that, I'm so excited for him, so he made it. And my last thing I want to say, I want to give a condolence to Councilmember Navarro, whose father passed away, and where his family, to our family, to his, we're in his, we're here in our prayers.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodge, appreciate it. So I've just got a couple of very quick things. I just wanted to reiterate what you just said, too, you know, Councilmember Navarro lost his father earlier this week, and just, you know, we are a small family here at the city of Tempe, and I've lost a parent as well, and we know how badly it hurts, and I've known Councilmember Navarro since he and I first ran for office together back in 2008, so he's sort of a member of my family as well, so I just, I know for myself and Councilmember Hodge and everyone sitting up here, we definitely have our thoughts and prayers with him during, and I would say, very difficult time for him and his family, so just, Councilmember Navarro, we hope you're, we hope you're doing well, and obviously, whatever you need from any of us or anyone in this community, we are here to support you. Next, I wanted to say too, a very early happy birthday here to Councilmember Chin here. I've had to make sure that I said that very publicly as well. Congratulations to your son, your oldest son, Jevon Hodge, of becoming the newest member of the Arizona House of Representatives for District 8. Jevon Hodge, who I met when I was 13, when he, and I was 13, when he was 13, I was 13, my goodness, he's going to use that against me now. Yeah, funny story about Jevon is, I did meet Jevon when he was 13 years old in an eighth grade, and I met him when we, for those of you who've been in with the city government for quite some time, when we used to have the table in front for issue review sessions, we would come down there, and in between the issue review session and coming up here for the formal meeting, I was coming up, and right before I started, Councilmember Hodge came up to me at that point, and she walked up to me with her son, who was in eighth grade, and she just said, you know, "Councilmember Woods, I'd like for you to meet my son, Jevon Hodge." And that was the first time I ever met him, right here, right standing in front, and to think that now he's a 30-year-old grown man and a member of the House of Representatives, and my representative, I couldn't be any prouder. So, so I am just, I should also tell, I should also tell this story, this is a good problem. Jevon's going to get real mad at me, but she's going to love this story. So just, as a kind of reiteration of the fact that your mother is always right about everything, so Jevon attended George Washington University, and there was a point when Jevon was talking about sort of taking some time to run a campaign, a political campaign, while he was still in college, and his mother called me at that time, Councilmember Hodge, and said, "Look, Cory, I really need my son to finish his degree at George Washington University, and then he is allowed to come back and do whatever political work he wants to do, but I need him to finish his education first, because his education is critically important to this family, and it's something that no one can ever take away from him once he has it." Now, the political campaign was not mine, it was another political campaign that he was talking about. This seemed like a request, but this was really an order that Councilmember Hodge made, and so we basically sat down at what is now, oh my God, it was, well, it was Encounter at the time, it's no longer Encounter, it's obviously changed names, it's Daily Jam, and we sat down at the table, and Councilmember Hodge looked at me and said, "Now Cory, what do you have to tell my son?" And I sat there, and I basically said everything she told me to say verbatim, but look where he is now, so, so, but, so congratulations, Jevon, or should I say Representative Hodge, we are all exceptionally proud of you, and the one who's the most proud of you, obviously, that was your mother, who's sitting up here, so congratulations, and I look forward to seeing you very soon. And also, once again, very happy first day of Black History Month. It's a wonderful month of celebration, but as Councilmember Hodge talked about, Black History is not just Black History, it's this country's history, and so very proud to celebrate that, and really glad to kick off the month. With that said, that is my final announcement this evening.